Board of Selectmen is meeting for March 24th. And we are starting tonight with our future meeting dates. We are scheduled to meet on the 31st of March, a week from tonight. In talking with the town administrator, she reminded me that that's now the continued hearing on the Randolph Avenue 40B project at the zoning board of appeals, which starts at 7:30, I believe. However, we have something already scheduled that's been noticed as a public hearing. A conduit hearing. So, we'll have to, so the plan is for us, assuming we all agree, would be to meet at 7:00, have a short meeting. We also have to act on demolition agreement on the Henrys Building. So, we have two items that we need to act on that night. So, if we meet at 7:00, then we can have a short meeting, probably not even with all of our usual items on the agenda. And adjourn by 7:30, or as soon as we can, in order to get over to the zoning board meeting.
Can you remind us what the Henrys deal is again?
It's just the demolition deadline.
Okay. Extending it again.
It's expiring on the 31st, but the conduit hearing is the, has already been canceled once before due to the snow. So, is that agreeable to everyone? We'll have a short meeting on the 31st. We'll go to the zoning board meeting. The next, well, then we would want to schedule our April dates, so possibilities would be April 7th and 21st. There's a Conservation Commission hearing on the Henrys Building on the 14th that we may want to avoid. That's a Tuesday night as well, so that we can be at that. So, we'd probably want to avoid scheduling a meeting on the 14th. Do the 7th and the 21st work for both of you?
7th works for me, yeah. That's Tuesday.
Both Tuesdays.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the 21st yet.
Okay. How about the 7th?
7th, yeah.
Okay. 31st and the 7th. We talked at a previous meeting about trying to schedule in sometime in April, a meeting with, it would be a public meeting, but it would really be a listening session, a chance for the public to come and give us ideas, suggestions, voice some complaints, but hopefully they'll be constructive about what worked, what didn't work for the snow storms that we had this winter. So, one date that we were potentially looking at was April 16th, and I don't know if we were able to get the department heads confirmed for that night. That's a Thursday night? It's after tax season, Tom?
I'm available.
Does that work for you?
I'll let you know.
Okay.
I mean, it would be the worst thing in the world if I'm not there, but...
Okay. And it really would be a chance just for the board, not to be talking at it, but to be taking comments from the public and giving the public an opportunity. I think we have a good understanding of what the issues are that we need to address, but giving the public an opportunity to come in and talk with us. At the last meeting of the emergency planning that Joe Lynch and Emery and some of the others and I were at, we thought that that would be a good thing to do in April after, our emergency planning people are already starting to look at this issue, but it would be good for us to hear from the public as well. Okay. Should we defer any further April dates until the next meeting and check our schedules?
So, the 7th, 16th, and 21st?
No, we're not sure on the 21st yet. Tom's not sure of that. So, the 31st of March, the 7th, and the 16th of April.
Okay.
Payroll and current, payroll and vendor warrants.
Move approval of current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have anyone tonight for citizen speak? I'm seeing none. We'll go on to the first topic, which is the annual town meeting warrant. We thought we might have the warrant committee chairman here to meet with us about the warrant, but the warrant is still being prepared, so hopefully we'll be able to invite him into one of our next, well, not the 31st, but actually, given the scheduling, maybe it'll be after the warrant goes to the printer and is already approved. But what we do have is the cover pages to the warrants that are in the materials. So, do we still need a motion on this, given that we don't have the actual warrants tonight?
You're signing, you're voting to sign the greeting page?
Okay.
So, you do have to vote that.
So, we're going to sign, we're going to read this motion?
Mm-hmm.
So, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the 2015 annual town meeting warrant. Second.
Any discussion? I do think we want to, going forward, try to, maybe, I don't know whether it's a committee or what, but we need to really examine the way the warrant gets put together. This has been the last, a lot, we have a volunteer committee, the warrant committee, that does an awful lot of work on this. We have a new warrant committee clerk. There's usually a lot of collaboration between the selectman's office and the warrant committee clerk, trying to put this together and get it approved. Our office is understaffed. The warrant committee clerk is new. I think we're kind of hitting some bumps in the road where, what we said a few months ago when we met with the moderator and the government study committee and others was that we really wanted to make sure the warrant is fully approved and there's not typos and things that were fine, you know, not that that's anyone's fault, it's just an awful lot of work on a volunteer committee. And it tends to fall on a few people on that committee, more than, more than probably anyone in the on-town ball.
It falls on the chair.
It does.
And even in the best of circumstances, it's a horrific job. It's, it's at least a week.
It is.
You do nothing.
But prepare the warrant.
But prepare the warrant.
Yeah. And the tables in the back come from the department heads, and sometimes those are coming in at the last minute, and there's a lot of confusion, sometimes getting everything ready to go to the printer, and usually Paul is driving the warrant down to the printer on, you know, the day that it's due. So, I think we need to, during the approving process, we haven't even seen it yet, so we really need to, maybe it's a committee, after-town meeting, I think we're going to have to try to have a more formalized way of approaching this process and seeing what we can do to make it a smoother process going forward. The warrant committee chairman always used to come into the selectman's meeting. I mean, I'd had to do it, I'm sure you did. That's sort of fallen off the radar the last few years, and we have to get that back on, because really, the warrant committee chairman should be in, giving the public, the warrant committee meetings are now televised, that didn't used to be the case, but still, the warrant committee chair, I think, should be coming into our meetings, presenting the warrant at a televised meeting. So, people who are watching can hear what the overview of the budget is and what some of the key articles are that may generate a lot of discussion at town meeting.
I think one thing that might help is, you know, when we do get to that strong town administrator article and, and the budget process being changed around, it might free up, it might speed that process up a little bit of getting through that whole budget season. And I think that's the problem. Everything comes down to the wire, you know, so.
Yeah.
And that's not the warrant committee's fault.
No, it's not. And it just seems like every year, we kind of go into the same, we improve the process, and we still have a lot of the same issues, but something for us to take up, hopefully to have it be a smoother process next year and less work on a volunteer board. Okay. So, we have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on our agenda is, it's to rescind the state of emergency in the on-street parking ban that we put into place on February 12th. And obviously, the snow's been melting for a while, it has not been a state of emergency for some time, but the on-street parking ban in many areas, it's been relaxed in the business areas and some other places. But the on-street parking ban has not been rescinded, so we have a motion to propose to rescind that.
You've been dealing with the snow, so you meant...
Yeah. I made a motion to rescind the public state of emergency that was declared on February 12, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now joined by our DPW director, Joe Lynch, who's going to go over a number of items with us. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Hey, Joe.
Hi, Joe.
What would you like to start with, Joe?
Want to just follow the agenda? Seems to be in the right order of my notes.
That's good.
Yeah. So, I guess the first thing on discussion was the Chapter 90 program for this coming year, and Chapter 90 is our local roadway program, and it derives its name from the Master of Law Chapter 90, which deals with, among other things, funding of state aid projects through the state, which is where we get most of our roadway money from. So, on this year's project list, what we're looking to accomplish is several things. Highland Street from Canton Avenue up to Fletcher Steel Way, Robin Street, it's full-length from Canton Avenue all the way up to Brush Hill Road, Big Blue Drive, it's full-length, Milton Street, which is the West Milton Street. We have two Milton Streets in town. One on East Milton and one over on the west side. We're talking about the one on the west, right?
So, you're...
We're talking about the one on the west side.
By Fuller.
That's correct. Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Going down to Ponce Valley Parkway to Brush Hill Road and beginning up at Blue Hill Avenue.
That's long overdue.
Oh, yeah. That road's brutal.
Get complaints about that.
That and Rob is a brutal road.
Actually, there's a common theme here, which, getting into too technically, all of these roadways were rebuilt in an era of 13, 12, 12, 13, 15 years ago, and clearly there was an issue with the methodology, whether it was inspection or materials or whatever. But the roads built in that era are all falling apart. So, we're using a lot of grinding techniques rather than completely taking them all the way down to gravel. So, we're going to, you get some better economy out of it by doing it that way. We can do more roads that way.
Oh, we're talking about too, George. Bradley Road, is that still on binder?
That's still on binder. We have a big stormwater project that's proposed over there.
Okay.
That is still binder. So, Big Blue, full-length, Milton Street West, which is full-length. Canton Avenue, which is beginning at Atherton Street, running all the way, northerly up to Hallen Street. And then Canton Avenue, a second stretch, Brook Road up to School Street, which is along that stretch of the Glover. Then Brook Road itself, from Central Avenue to Cape Cod Lane, and there's a very specific strategy for doing that small limit, and it's because the Safe Roots to School Program will be picking it up from there and taking it to the intersection, the rest of the distance. Construction inspections for all those projects, putting the top coat on Spafford Road, now that the gas company is back in there and trying to finish, finish up their work. And then lastly, is some funds set aside for the, any acquisition of right-of-way for that Safe Roots to School Program, and we'll talk about that, I think, in a separate discussion.
Chapter 90 money can be used for that?
For acquisition of right-of-way on a federal highway project, yes.
Okay. Now, we have approximately $900,000 in Chapter 90 money this year, or?
That's correct. They, they, we went to the $300,000 bond bill last year and again this year, so we'll be seeing the higher amount, an additional 300 over typical. So, it's over $900,000. And I'm going to talk about one other thing while we're on the subject, unless there's any questions about those in specific.
I have one. Has this been revised since the winter that we just went through? Or were these streets anyway already?
No, no, this is, this is...
I don't think Milton Street was on there.
I don't think it was. I thought Milton, it was 10 years away or so, because that's when we've gotten a lot of complaints about it.
Milton, Milton Street was mostly a pothole complaint, and what we were finding, the frequency of the, that's one of those roads that was built, and it's delaminating, they're not potholes. An entire layer is peeling off. You can't, it's throwing good money after bad patching. And now, it's patching areas as big as a table every 50 feet, which is crazy. So, it's going to be grinding an entire layer out, put a good tackifier adhesive coat in between, and then putting a top course on top of it. So, that's the, so we did add that back on, more from efficiency, but it had deteriorated pretty rapidly last winter, and we just didn't have enough money to put it on for last year.
So, a few of these streets have really been damaged during the past winter. That's not the reason they were on, they were already scheduled to be on the list for next year?
I think Robbins was only, half of it was only going to be done, right?
It was just a small portion, it was a smaller portion, so at this point, doing the full length, because we know it was all done at the same time. It would, it's inevitable that, you know, next couple of years, you could see the rest of it peel up. So, it's just high time to take it all.
Yeah. Well, actually, the part from Blue Hill out up to Brush Hill is just as bad as the part from Canton.
Oh, it's brutal, yeah.
Not much different.
Yeah. So, we did see some deterioration, more so on all of those roads, but most of those were already targeted, you know, late in the fall last year. It was just a matter of wrestling, you know, a lot of stuff that we have to do, we have to coordinate our water projects with our sewer projects, with our drainage projects, with the gas companies' infrastructure. So, we want to make certain that we're, you know, not putting a new road on top of something that needs, you know, a major improvement. And if it does need a major improvement, how far out and would we go to a lesser construction detail? In other words, just an overlay rather than a grind in an overlay to maybe get three or four years out of it, knowing that five years out, you're going to be replacing, you know, a water main that, you know, it's slated for that far out. So, we, that's the sort of analysis we do in the wintertime, you know, far more than simply fighting snowstorms.
George, I just got a question. Do you only do enough streets that can be paid for by Chapter 90 money?
Typically, yes, but the Capitol Committee and the Warrant Committee and Town Meeting together have supported over the past two years.
Some money.
Some additional monies. $400,000 two years ago, last year, $1 million dedicated directly to Central Avenue, and this year, another $400,000.
Four or five, yeah, I forget which.
Well, it's recommended, recommended at four.
Four, yeah. So, there'll be more streets in this?
No, this includes all of those monies.
Oh, it does?
It does. Yeah, the, we, and actually, if I can switch into the next one, I also included an announcement that it's been formally made yesterday. It was formally received in writing yesterday, formally announced by the governor's office last Friday, and it's been talked about for about a week now.
Yeah.
And the governor went to the legislature and asked for an additional $30 million in winter recovery monies to make available to cities and towns to deal with, as Kathleen mentioned, is those roads that deteriorated. Milton's portion is a, is a small amount in the overall realm of things, but it's large enough in our realm that it's, you know, $93,368, that additional for monies we're getting this year, and this program includes those monies.
Are they using the Chapter 90 formula to, to dole that out?
It's different than, it's similar to, but no, it's not the same Chapter 90 formula. The winter recovery calculation, if you're curious, is on the MassDOT website.
That's true.
Doing business with the state, state aid, and then winter recovery.
I guess that makes sense, because the western part of the state didn't get hit as bad as the, so you...
It doesn't matter. It was, it was doled out, but, but not on a county-county, county-by-county basis based on, on severity of the winter.
Interesting.
But they also did not follow precisely the Chapter 90 formula.
Okay.
So, the monies you're seeing in this project include all of those sources, Chapter 90, the anticipated approval of town meeting monies, as well as that additional $93,000 from the state.
Okay. One question I have to throw to is, even though it's, and it's, I understand it's just patching at this point, but East Milton, Granite Avenue, going right from the fire station up to the fruit center, that area, is that scheduled? I mean, that roadway's horrific right now.
Most of that interchange is part of the DEC project.
I know it's part of the DEC project, but...
Two Grubers Bagels.
Yeah. I know, I know it is, but, you know, how, how long can we wait before we...
We're out there patching. We are patching, that's not to say that we're not doing anything in the meantime, we're just, we're patching it three to five days every week, you know, with weather permitting and other work assignments permitting.
They just open back up again?
Yeah. We're out there patching that area, and it's a lot of material that's going in there.
Okay.
That's a, you know, given the complexity of that, of that whole area, it's not as doing a major reservicing?
No, I understand you're not going to do that.
Yeah. So, just because these streets are specifically spelled out with regards to roadway program doesn't mean that, you know, potholes and other defects elsewhere don't, don't get addressed.
Okay.
Clearly, I did make that clear.
Joe, just on the, the additional money from, from the state, the $93,000? We have to use that by June?
Use it.
We have to use, we have to have the work done by June, I suppose?
Use it or lose it is the cliche that they use, and they, they are using it with emphasis. Let's put that in perspective. All construction work must be completed, 100% complete by June 30th. All reimbursements meeting, all receipts, all invoices received, processed, payments made, cancel checks returned, and the reimbursement package back to the state by July 30th.
For all Chapter 90 money?
For just the $93,000.
For just the $93,000.
Just the $93,000. So, as a result, a contract came in yesterday, and there's been some discussion, I think, that the board is going to consider, you know, authorizing the town to sign this contract. It only makes sense to, can't wait to another week. Every day we lose is, is that much more against us getting the work done. And two parts of that is to execute the, to participate in the program, execute the contract. And then, there's an authorized signatory, and it really needs to authorize two signatories, you know, and your town administrator typically, and then myself. Emery would sign the contract on behalf of the board. But all of those reports and the reimbursements and all those, all those other things that I have to sign, we would have to otherwise march through Emery, because they won't accept those documents without the authorized signatory.
So, you must have the work done by June 30th?
That's correct.
And you must have your paperwork in by July 31st?
That's correct. So, it's doable. The roads we picked are all eligible. We've already, we've been working with our consortium. We've extended most of our construction contracts this year. We're still in negotiation for our largest contractor, the one who would do most of this work.
Yeah.
I say negotiations carefully, because it's a unilateral decision. The consortium makes the decision, but the contractors simply could refuse to schedule it. The reality is, there are, in fact, even DOT's warning coming out in writing to us is, you know, there were only a limited number of contractors that can do this work. Get on their schedules fast, because you're going to have trouble getting, getting the work done. So, getting this approved tonight, getting it back to DOT tomorrow, getting DOT to sign it and get it back to us. Once it's signed, they're going to email it to us. We can then start spending money. We can't spend a penny until it's executed by the state.
But you can bury this money in, in your first street, right, that you do?
No question. The question, the only question is getting the contract immobilized, which we want to do in the next two weeks. Get them in, get them out, and get our check marked.
Okay. So, it's not like for a specific job or anything?
Right.
Yeah.
That's right. So, not I have to, I don't, not as though I have to complete that whole list. Forget one, get it done, get it invoiced, and get it moved.
Right. Okay.
Exactly right.
Okay. So, we have a draft motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a one-time contract between the town and MassDOT that will allow the town to be reimbursed for up to $93,368 of roadway repairs resulting from this year's harsh winter weather, and will include patching of potholes, cracking, and other surface defects, including paving projects, repair, replacement of signage, guardrails, storm gate, storm grates, and road striping and/or painting, and projects identified through written agreement between MassDOT Division District Office and the Town of Milton, and to authorize the town administrator to sign all pertinent paperwork on behalf of the board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There's a second piece of that, and that is to authorize the town administrator to execute the contract on behalf of the board, but to also designate an authorized signatory from the DPW itself, and typically myself, in order to, for me to sign other documents.
We don't have a motion prepared.
Is that what you were going to say, Paul?
What was that again, Joe?
Can we just add Public Works Director here?
Well, we've already voted on this. We'll just make a second motion. What was the second motion, Joe?
It's the same as that, with the exception of add Emery, take Emery's name, I'll put mine in, and it's to sign all other pertinent documents, but not the contract.
Take Emery's name? Okay. So, we have to do a second motion.
Where is Emery's name?
So, basically, the motion would read to authorize the DPW director to sign all pertinent paperwork on behalf of the board with respect to the MassDOT, the agreement between MassDOT Highway Division District Office and the Town of Milton?
Sounds, sounds good. Does that sound good, Joe?
Yes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Safe Roots to Schools.
So, without going into, in great detail, because I believe we, you guys had a quorum of the Board of Selectmen at the Warrant Committee meeting last week, where we described the process.
We did.
So, the only thing that's transpired since then, and what it really boils down to is the Safe Roots to School Program, for those people who didn't watch last week's meeting, real quickly, is a, it's a $1 million federal highway administration grant. It's, it's based on promoting walking and cycling of students to and from school rather than riding their buses or riding cars. It's to promote health and wellness, as well as some environmental factors. It's a...
Where we used to get to school?
How we used to get to school.
That's right.
No, we didn't need an incentive, did we? Just did it. But nonetheless, it's an incentive at the federal government level. It's nationwide. Milton has been in this process for nearly a decade in pursuing this, this program from the, from the inception to the needs assessment in the inventory of infrastructure, resulting in ultimately eligibility and ultimately selection to, to get a grant for $1 million for improvements. Public hearing was conducted last October. There was a lot of opposition to that design, more criticisms initially, and then opposition depending on some of the things that could be changed. DOT was looking to drop the project and say, we surrender, we're not going to, you know, you're not interested in the money. We convinced them to listen to the comments, go back and try to redesign it, and roll it back out and see if we could, you know, win some of these people over and, and get the project going. That meeting is scheduled, the follow-up meeting, is this Thursday night at 6:30 at the Glover School Auditorium Cafeteria. All are invited. Public audiences have already gone out. It's not a public hearing. The state conducts us. We are, we are, we are like the abutters, so we're going as, as representatives of the community, but it's not our project, it's a state project on the behalf of federal highway administration. Things like specificity on what right-of-way acquisition we need, as we spoke of earlier, will be, be available at that meeting, so people will see what the impacts are. There are two land takings of areas where sidewalk already exists. We're not furthering the sidewalk incursion into private, into, into the land. And I hesitated to say private, because those two land takings are actually both Town and Milton own properties. So, those are the only actual takings of property.
Everything else is temporary.
Everything else is temporary easements, and it's approximately 35 projects affected. And there, it's only temporary during the onset and throughout the duration of construction. And it's principally for restoration of, you know, transition slopes and sidewalks and walkways, you know, in, in driveway areas, just to make the blend together with the project.
Now, in terms of, you, you still anticipate there might be some kind of a, a cash payment for some of these, or not?
The, the language that's in the town meeting, are we speaking to the warrant article? We are, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, the language in the warrant article is, is required language under the federal highway administration. It's one-size-fits-all, whether it's San Francisco, San Diego, or Milton. It's all the same language, so it's non-negotiable language, and it allows for, if I'm taking your entire property to widen an intersection, which we're not, it includes language that would allow for that. So, it would typically result in an understanding of the area infected, an understanding of value, which might result in appraisals being done, in recognition that it's temporary, so what's it really worth? But an appraisal, that's how to do that. But an appraisal is how to do that. And then in the end, an agreement with the homeowner to pay for whatever it is that we need.
And if we had to come up with this, if there is any money that has to change hands as a result of taking, would it come out of the grant?
It's out of Chapter 90. That's that Chapter 90 right-of-way acquisition section.
Oh, that's right, okay. You're right, okay.
It would come out of Chapter 90.
So it's basically coming out of our money?
It's not eligible from the state or from the federal highway program.
Okay, gotcha.
Only our own responsibility, let's be, let's really be ridiculous, to be in front of your house and causing you some inconvenience. Let's say you wanted a thousand dollars, we're talking about thirty-five property, thirty-five thousand dollars to leverage a million dollars is what we're talking about.
Yep.
At the worst. But if you don't secure full right-of-way, if you don't reach agreement with one-hundred percent of the affected parties, project goes away.
Wow. Is that right?
So we haven't voted, we've voted to submit the article but we haven't voted a position on this article. We were at the Warren Committee, we heard a really detailed discussion there by both Joe and John Thompson. Do we have any interest in voting a position on this article tonight?
Sure. I'm fine with it.
Actually, I guess we don't have the number here on this but call the Safe Roots to Schools article.
I'll make a motion that the board support the Safe Roots to School article.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Joe. Do you want to go onto the snow and ice deficit?
Sure. Well-
You sure?
We've had only a couple of minor snow events since. We've used no contractors, we've used only public works forces. One of those two events occurred over a weekend, last weekend, so it did involve some over time negligible and we had projections and some anticipated, you know, projections built into these numbers to begin with so I believe our projected deficit still as it was a couple of weeks ago, hasn't changed at all. And that projected deficit is, I've shared this with Emery at this point and haven't shared specifically with the Warren Committee but that number's one million fifty-five thousand and one hundred and six dollars and thirty-six cents, thereabouts. Emery can probably speak to the work that she and Amy have done but, you know, they've identified the ways that this could be covered.
We are going to use free cash, we're going to use the fee of reimbursement of one hundred and forty-two thousand, we're going to use some of the savings from the solid waste contract in Joe's budget for fiscal year fifteen and we should meet the deficit.
Joe, is there any concern with the rain coming up? Couple inches of rain they're talking about over the weekend and still having a snow coming down there?
The snowpack at this point is pretty well hardened. It's glazed over. If it was light and fluffy, the sponging effect-
Runoff, I guess, is the real question.
It's not as much of a concern. We've already had some substantial melt-off as it is but they're calling for, you know, localized flooding in low-lying areas, you know, standard two-inch spring rain. If it's more prolonged, I mean, we've got a ground cover, we have a frozen frost condition, we have a ground cover very similar to those March storms of two thousand nine, very similar to that. So we know those vulnerable areas that were hit pretty hard back then in two thousand nine was Huntington and Garden, we had pretty hot sections of Brook and isolated areas down along the Parkway.
Right.
And other than that, the areas seem to handle it pretty well.
So we're not anticipating at this point any problems? Joe, could you talk, just for-
I didn't answer that question. I mean, we're aware of the winter, of the weather conditions, we're watching that forecast, we know what the forecast is and, you know, if it happens during the day, we'll have people out there clearing basins as we would in every slump.
Okay.
But it is a classic springtime rain in similar ground conditions to what we had in two thousand nine which did result in some flooding.
Any other questions on this or comments?
I was just wondering if you could comment on the two snow farms that we have, one at Kelly Field and at the high school.
Sure.
Since the sports are going to be starting up again soon.
Yeah, actually, the park department head has asked that I look into that, what are the options that we have. I've gone out and, we actually have four snow farms.
So far.
Three of them are on land that's used by the park department. One is Kelly Field Parking Lot. But that mountain got so high, it's gone over the fence into the tennis court area but not so much the baseball field area. That mountain is enormous. I made an estimate of what it would take for us to, you know, what would it take for us to get that snow out there? Is it fit, take, haul it away, to melt it, to do whatever it would be? Just gut feeling based on, I know what it costs for us to put it there and then to be faced with, handle it again and now take it somewhere else is going to be more money minus what has melted but it's actually hotter now than when we got it in the first time.
Yep.
I figure it's about a half a million dollars to deal with it. So I did talk to two of the folks that did our, you know, participated in our hauling operation to begin with and right out of the gate, the very first guy said between four hundred and six hundred thousand dollars to remove it. So it's going to melt. It's going to melt where it is. What we're doing is we're going, we can't do it at the high school from access perspective but at the Kelly Field occasionally, we're going down occasionally a couple days a week with our front end load and we're trying to just flatten it out, spread it across the park. Let's let it melt some as best as we can. It's scratching at a glacier. It's, you know, it's a feel-good effort but we're making little to no progress on that. But in the same token, you know, they recognize the ball fields are going to be, you know, anticipated to be in use. I suspect baseball season is three, four weeks away at the longest.
Practice even earlier, but yeah.
So the playing surfaces themselves shouldn't be affected. They're still in snowpack themselves so unless they're clearing the snow, their own fields, you know, they have their own snow on them. But the stuff on the perimeter is affecting, particularly at the Kelly Field, is affecting parking more than anything.
All right, Joe, on to your quarterly report.
I know you've got a relatively long meeting so I'm going to try to breeze through this as quickly and briefly as I can but in the same token, if you feel you need to ask questions, just chime right in, okay? So from the water perspective, water department perspective, we've got six-point-four, we have, I got, we have six-point-four million dollars comprised in three water capital projects that we've been talking about. We went to town meeting for that five-point-four million dollar bond authorization and the rest of that money is being dealt with with our own local capital money and with MWR money. So we completed the design and bidding for the water main replacements. It's two-point-eight million dollar construction project. That contract was awarded to SB General Contracting and construction's due to start there in the next couple of weeks. Again, just waiting for frost to come out of the ground. That project is water mains on, in Canton Avenue for, best description from just about Brushell Road where it comes across Canton Avenue all the way down to Atherton and then another stretch down in Sumner and Harland area which is why that section of Chapter 90 railway is a section of road in between. So at the end, we're trying to get the full roadway. This is, that component was for looping, to help with that looping issue with the Canton water. All of these are related to that Canton water disconnection. So that's the looping piece of it. We also completed the design and bid and opened bids for a half a million dollar pressure reducing and regulating station. That contract was awarded to Vazella and Sons. That project's already started with regards to shop door reviews. It's a big, huge vault as big as this room, it's buried underground, it's full of mechanical devices so-
Where is it?
It's going to be in Metropolitan Avenue, right on the Boston line.
So right where the meter is?
Meter fifty-five connection from the MWR. And that helps us regulate the flows of the tanks to oscillate evening and daytime. Evening, fill the tank up and then during the daytime when demand is high to be able to let the tanks do their job. And then lastly, we've completed the design and the bidding for the water tank projects, two tanks, two locations, three-point-two million dollars. Those bids were opened a couple of weeks ago. We have an apparent low bidder, we're still in the midst of reviewing their bid documents and reviewing their contract documents before we make the actual award but that is not as time-sensitive because you wouldn't start that project until after your summer demand goes by. The project wouldn't even start until the fall.
And where do we stand with the state in terms of DCR approval? Because that's on DCR land.
We have the construction permit for, thick blue, we do not have a construction permit. We have both permits squared away. As of today, I had a conversation with DCR. I have a draft permit for the second tank as of today. I haven't, just haven't seen it yet. I know it's coming tomorrow. That's not an issue.
Okay.
With regards to the permanence of it, once the work is complete, because part of post-nine eleven requirements is permanent security fencing and so once we know the limits of where the fencing ultimately go in any disturbed areas, we will then secure a permit and easement with DCR and DCR is aboard with that. The folks, we've met with them on that and Senator Joyce will facilitate getting that in through. It's going to take, to get the DCR easement's going to also take legislative action so Senator Joyce is prepared to submit that when the time is right. So that's all set too. So with the system study done and the projects done as far as the bidding and design is concerned, when the last piece of that master plan is looking at operational efficiencies, what that's looking at is our metering system and the way we collect our data, the way we do our billing. We're looking at the way we do our capital planning and our debt service forecasting which will help, you know, your committee, Tom. We're also going to be looking at the analysis of our rate structure, whether we use tiers the way we know them, different set of tiers, where we don't use tiers at all. We already wrestled with and dealt with the multi-unit issue in the last rate setting and then we're going to look at irrigation versus domestic uses and whether there ought to be a different rate structure depending on your need. Obviously, if you need to, you know, maintain the light, you know, the vitality of your household by letting people drink water and bathe in it, it's different than the superfluous need of irrigation which puts the largest strain on our system. So, you know, there could be considerations of how the rate structure looks at. So that system is, that's all under consideration now and it's an ongoing process but the goal of that will be, just like last year, is to roll that out as part of our rate setting which we do in the summer months and have in place by the end of July or early August. We continue with our, two aspects of our sewer capital program and two aspects being first is you identify where your vulnerabilities are. It's our II investigation and that's our television and metering work to determine which areas of our system have issues with infiltration and inflow and what it is you need to do to deal with it. So we always look at an investigation this year. This year's investigation will become next year's rehabilitation. So every year, we do investigation and rehabilitation. They're both ongoing. The investigation contract is about to go up to bid. They would typically do that in the spring and early summer to get the investigation out of the way. And then the rehab of the areas identified last year are in design and those will typically go up to bid in late spring if construction throughout the summer and fall.
How do you know what to investigate?
Very complicated. We look at vulnerabilities of topography and we also have master meters so we're looking where our flow is coming in and we measure wet weather and dry weather flow. So if you're getting dry weather, like in the summer months, if you're seeing your flow as an ambient background, yet in a rainstorm, your flows go up, you know you have a problem in that sewer shed and that's where you target and spread out from there.
I see.
Wet weather and dry weather flows, far more complicated than that but-
Joe, you might be planning to get to this but what's the status on the unbilled sewer policy? Have you identified more cases or can you give us an update on that?
You didn't let me change my page. It was the next item.
Well, you said, you were talking about sewer so right in mind.
So at this point, we've identified twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-seven properties that have been confirmed connected. Those folks have all been put on the sewer roles and those people have all been billed. Every one of them have been under the sewer amnesty program so they've all been billed with the four-year back charge instead of six-year back charge. Back in end of October, early November, we sent out an additional fifty. There are two-hundred-and-twenty target properties still to be investigated so we sent out an additional fifty letters to the most, we've got them prioritized by likely, not so, you know, less likely, not so likely and then probably not. So we're kind of whittling them down, hitting the low-hanging fruit, if you will, first. So we sent out fifty letters back in the end of October. Twenty-four of those fifty responded within that thirty days. If you remember our program, we give them thirty days to respond, to make them eligible for amnesty. So twenty-four of those folks, about half, responded within the allocated thirty days. Of those twenty-four, twenty-one of those properties have been inspected and concluded resulting in one found to be connected to municipal sewer. We had one of those ones that you mentioned, the twenty-seven.
So the other ones not?
And the other, nineteen are not. There are still four properties that require further investigation but when winter set in, some of the work that you have to do was, it just was prohibitive in the wintertime. So we had to let the snow clear. More importantly is twenty-six of those recipients, and all those folks, by the way, are eligible for amnesty. Twenty-six of those folks did not respond within the thirty days and thus far have not responded. So they are ineligible for amnesty so whatever the findings are on those, if we find them to be connected to sewer, municipal sewer, they will be getting the full six-year back So at this point, we're looking to follow up on those remaining twenty-six and we're at the same time going to put out another fifty letters in the next few weeks to take it, roll it into that next phase.
Okay.
So at that pace, we're looking to probably conclude the investigation within this year.
Good.
Good.
We've also working on the sewer issues, we're still working with our force main rehabilitation. We have three pump stations with two on Randolph Avenue and one on Granite Avenue. The two pump stations on Randolph Avenue were rehabilitated three years ago. The force mains, which is the discharge pipe, if you will, have had recurring fractures and leakages in them and, you know, causing repairs. So those are old and they're more vulnerable than a water main because of the pulsing that they see. So those are out for investigation right now and will likely result in a design contract and a construction bid, you know, in the next year. Granite Avenue, which does not have its pump station replaced, has been evaluated six years ago as we did all of our pump station evaluations. It is in need of a major rehabilitation and when you look at the major rehabilitation, you typically want to go in and replace the pump station especially if you're trying to put them all on the same sort of function. There's different types of pumps and at this point, we have a conglomeration of four different types but our goal has been to get most of them to what's called a suction-lift pump station. So the two new ones we did recently, there's one we did about seven or eight years ago and lastly, there's one down at the DCR property on Hillside that was done about twenty years ago are all suction lifting. You typically want to go to that same sort of style station and you can take advantage of those with variable frequency drives to save energy as well. So that evaluation's being made as far as looking at what our next sewer project will look like. We talked about the, we already talked about the evaluation of our II program so that's ongoing as far as getting a bid out on the street for the contractor to do the work and then the rehab is in final design and that'll be going up to bid with construction this summer.
Joe, as far as the II investigations, what percentage of the town have we inspected at this point? I mean, is this just an ongoing, when you finish, you just start all over again or is there an end to it?
You asked the right question because there are two schools of thought. You make progress every single year but as you tighten up areas, it makes those other areas that were less vulnerable, it makes them vulnerable because now you've added capacity back in that line and what never used to be able to leak in suddenly starts leaking it. So it's an ongoing continual process but it diminishes as the program goes on and on. So you should see less of it in less amounts of rehabilitation work year to year.
Okay.
So we're about halfway through looking at the entire town, you know, for the first time through. So highway projects, we talked about potholes and frost heaves already, we were talking about Chapter 90, we talked about the Governor Baker winter recovery monies. We're working with identifying all of our utility defects, utility trenches principally National Grid because it's our gas company, they dig up our streets like at Swiss cheese. Their trenches suffered a lot of vulnerability throughout the winter because, you know, they let them winter over one year and then they come back and they typically, you know, freshen them up in the spring and the summer. But, you know, those obviously suffered some severe impacts because of the same weather we all suffered so we're in the midst of working, identifying that list and working with the gas company to get them straightened out. We talked about this year's roadway program and the streets included. We talked, ever so brief, we talked about, I'll mention real quickly, that we're part of a consortium when it comes to our construction contracts. We've extended most of the service contracts. We're dealing with one still, one contract is still to extend. It's a unilateral decision. We believe that we will reach that decision as early as tomorrow afternoon because there's one last consortium meeting tomorrow. With that being, with that extension in place, then we can actually schedule the work. So step one was getting the winter recovery money signed that we talked about tonight. Step two was extend the contract and get them scheduled. So that should all happen in rapid succession now. Can't do any physical work until we get the contract back from the state. Other big roadway projects, we have two-point-five to three-point-million-dollar Blue Hills Parkway project. Folks have seen public hearings on that one. That's Elliot Street, Mattapian Square area, Blue Hills Parkway and that interchange between Truman Highway, Brushell Road, Blue Hill Avenue. It's, everything comes together in that confluence. So that was work of Senator Joyce to work with the DCR and Mass DOT to coordinate several projects and several pockets of money together, none of which were our money to get the design done, the design is done and it's in review with the state, DCR and DOT now as far as we'd expect. Then we'll take out the bid documents, nothing, we'll be ready to go up to bid probably in about a month with construction this summer. It's probably a two-year construction project.
This is for paving or?
It's reconstruction, realignment, signal coordination and not closing Elliot Street to one-way traffic. We did that test, if you remember. It was part of the design element, we wanted to rule it out and when we did it, we measured traffic impacts and determined that any benefit we would have gotten, we would have lost in muddy neighborhood impacts. So we pulled the plug on that.
Because that's deadly. I actually witnessed a six-car accident there the other day, you know, it's awful.
If you're on Elliot Street and you're trying to venture to Hyde Park, let's say, and you need to cut into two lanes of traffic-
And go to left lane.
Go across and then cross three lanes of traffic to get out to Truman Highway.
Exactly where the accident was.
Fifty, fifty-eight thousand cars go through that interchange a day. Fifty-eight thousand, it's enormous. So that's, that project is being done with beta and, you know, with our oversight but that project's about to go up to bid. We already talked about Safe Roots to School. That project is going to public hearing. It's ninety-eight percent designed. The goal will be passage of town meeting, acquisition of right-of-way. It's already authorized money so if we go, federal highway users ready to advertise as their threshold. If it's ready to advertise come the end of, beginning of their fiscal year, so by September thirtieth prior to October first, then the project will be built in the next fiscal year, you know, this fall or next spring. And again, a reminder for the folks, if they want to, if they're curious or live in that area, March twenty-sixth at six-thirty in the Glover School Cafeteria. We also have the million-dollar Mass Works Grant. Senator Joyce was very, very good at keeping us busy in my department. He brought in the million-dollar Mass Works Grant application. We've received that. We worked throughout last year to get the design done. We went up to bid in end of November, early December. Against any logic, we, because of a time constraint, we authorized our contractor to stop work in December. He did some minor conduit work but then the winter set and we had it shut down and it's because the Mass Works Grant was potentially in peril, ending on June thirtieth of this year. But since we showed our good faith and- But since we showed our good faith and since we did everything we said we were going to do, we actually, I had a conversation with our project manager just yesterday in a conference call, thirty-first, in the afternoon of the thirty-first, to get an extension through November of two thousand and fifteen. So, we're going to take it through the construction season. We should be out of there by September. But I want an extra two-month cushion.
That's good news.
So, the bid's open, contract's awarded, and they're about to restart in the next week or two. Stormwater, we've already started our street sweeping program. We have not started our catch basin cleaning. Catch basins are still frozen with, you know, heavy material in them. But, you know, we're in the midst of already, you know, picking up our heavy sand accumulations from the winter, and we have our little mini vac out there picking up the trash and debris from the side of the roadway, you know, whatever we're able to get at. So, we're already getting a jump on it, even though we had a pretty severe winter. So, we're on schedule with what we typically do. For the folks at home, just so they understand what the expectations are, it doesn't change in any year, but, you know, every street will be swept at least once, every neighborhood street once, typically once. Business districts will be swept weekly.
Once every, once a year?
Once a year. Streets are swept once a year. Business districts are swept weekly, and then heavy traffic areas are swept once a month. I know we have, you know, a major water main break, or we have something that happens with debris on the road, we're going to be out there sweeping it again, of course. And that exceeds the NIPD's requirements for street sweeping. The, I think you folks know, but I'll mention it again, the NIPD's permit has now come out in draft form. It's out for public comment. It's still out for public comment. What that is, is once they close the public comment period, they will issue the draft, they will issue the permit, then requiring the town to commit into the NOI. So, you know, that's something that'll be hitting us likely in the middle of summer, early fall. That will be what we've been, I've been talking about, since you've known me, and that's this big looming issue that's out there.
Has there been any more grumbling about the unfunded mandate, or?
Just grumbling, there's no solution to it.
No, and no.
I shouldn't say no. The only, I've done some grumbling in the town's Warren, Capitol Committee and the Warren Committee have, you know, understood it, town meetings understood it. I built my budget this year, including making some of my stormwater savings, strike that, some of my sanitation savings from solid waste, and kicked it in as a matter of good faith, kicked it into stormwater to be able to carry out some of these mandates. So, assuming, you know, success at town meeting, you know, we are making progress better than a lot of communities. If you remember, we participated in a New Challenge Initiative Grant with NEPLA and several other communities, and among those other communities, Milton was singled out as one of the pilot communities to look at the viability of affording a, that exact question, of creating municipal utility, how do you pay for it, and what does you need to do, and what's your local impact. So, we competed that work. Some numbers that I have built in my budget are based on those needs, and it doesn't even begin to scratch the surface of what we really need. Okay. Okay. Solid waste, I think simply said, people have gotten over the growing pains, they're performing pretty well. I think the measure of that is not a single day missed this winter, where our other contractor would have easily missed several weeks. So, that's, to me, that's a huge measure of success. They're out there getting the stuff and, you know, in all weather. They should take on the post office's slogan.
Have been following sticker sales and sticker revenue, is it?
Sticker revenue was down, but so is tonnage, but not proportionately.
So, it's still the same problem?
Still the same problem, right. Within engineering department, so on top of everything else, we're maintaining our GIS system, a work order tracking system. We're in beta development still with our system. That's actually coming on really good. So, we're still going to be using it in-house in public works for probably about six months to work the bugs out of it. And once we get it running the way we think it should, we're going to roll it into departments. So, people like the Selectmen's Office, when they take a call, they can simply one-write the service request, as opposed to interchanging emails and printing and, you know, writing stuff down and phone calls. It just gets into a one-write system. Once we get it through the beta with expanded departments, then we'll be able to roll it out for public access, you know, put it on the website and have people be able to just access it directly.
Can they make requests online then?
They will. The goal is to ultimately be able to do that, have it be user-friendly, and actually have a mobile app where it comes in as a service request. They won't be able to write a work order, but they can ask the question, and then the supervisor will get the question, be able to convert it to a work order. When the work, if it all works out and people are using automated systems, when it's closed out, the person will get an answer that says, "Your request numbered such and such, dated such and such, has been resolved," and they'll get that back in the form of electronic email.
Excuse me, Joe, do you have much more to cover on this report? Because we do have some people waiting.
No, I guess, you know, the rest of it is just, there's a lot of project.
We could have you come back for another, you know, we could split your quarterly report up into two meetings if you'd be.
No, no, that's fine. Just that, you know, I guess the only takeaway is that long, long winter, lots of snow fighting, and about sixty million dollars worth of project development still on the table, and we didn't miss a step. So, we do a hell of a lot more than fight for the snow.
We know you do.
Thank you. Good job, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a meeting with the Milton Animal League regarding the shelter. So, we're joined by Attorney Marion McGettrick, who's representing the shelter. Marion, do you have anyone else with you who'd like to join us at the table? Feel free.
Anyone who would like to come up here, that's fine, but.
Hello, I'm Melissa Cook. I was the president of the Milton Animal League, recently taken over, so it's very nice to meet everybody on the board and all the other members.
Nice to meet you.
Hello. Meet you, Melissa.
You took over from Linda Palmer.
I did. I took over from Linda Palmer about a month or so ago now, yes. Great steps have happened since then, so it's very good news.
And so, I'm Marion McGettrick, and, you know, trying to help them with legal services with this process of building a new animal shelter. It's been a smooth transition.
Yes.
You know, I just send my emails to a new person, but they get sent out and everybody, you know, can take a look and give us comments. So, the reason we asked to meet with you tonight is that we've sent, we tried to draft a charge or a description of what an advisory building committee would do. I know you sent it to Town Council and it's come back. So, you know, we're eager to see you decide what the charge for the committee should be. We have been talking about who the nominee should be from the animal shelter. Do you have a name yet, or are we still working?
We do not have a name yet. We're still working. We have a couple of ideas out there. We just got an idea of kind of what the time commitment would be in terms of, you know, what we'll need to ask of somebody to really be able to participate successfully in the committee. We expect to have a name for you very shortly here, so hopefully within the next week or so.
That's good.
We're anxious to get going, too. So, definitely won't be the one to hold you up, so we'll have a name for you.
Well, the charge contemplates a seven-member committee, so I think we have a couple of names, people who are interested. So, we should probably take this opportunity to, while we're on TV, to ask if there are people who are interested in serving on this committee, who either have a great interest in the animal shelter or expertise in development or construction or real estate or energy costs, any particular area of expertise like that. We could use a good qualified candidate or two for this committee.
Sure.
So, we have the draft of the charge. Did you want to say anything about this, Marion? It has been reviewed by Town Council, has made a few changes. Did you see his comments?
We did, and they're good comments. They don't really change the substance of what we had given you, just putting it in proper form for a vote. And, you know, this was sort of just brainstorming, you know, in terms of trying to think of what ought to be in the charge. I did look at the charges that we've used for building committees by town meeting, which is a different thing, because the building committee in that case has a full responsibility for a lot of decision-making. This building committee is going to advise the Board of Selectmen, but it will be very important, I think, to help the process along and provide extra expertise. So, this was mostly just written from the perspective of thinking about what this committee might have to address, and there was no particular magic to what should be included. So, if you have other changes, I'm sure we'd be more than willing to support them, too.
I thought your draft charge looked good. Covered really what both sides have thought the responsibilities of the committee would be. The council's comments really were that it'd be an advisory committee, the Board rather than calling it a building committee, but just clarifying that it's an advisory committee.
Right.
And the league supports the seven members, too. I think I put in my draft, seven or nine, just sort of to have an option to talk about, but I don't know.
I think seven makes more sense, just in terms of.
If it's too big, it's unwieldy, you know.
Yeah, and I think what we had proposed was the no more than seven. We didn't obviously want to get to a position where we were stuck needing seven and we couldn't find the seventh person, so that we're perfectly comfortable with that language.
Okay. We also have a steps memo from you outlining what the next steps in the process would be.
Yeah, this is, whenever I do, try to do this, I always say, "Wow, there's really a lot involved in a project, isn't there?" And every time I look, think about it myself, I come up with more steps. The point of this, though, is that having gone through a number of years ago, being involved with a school building project, I know that there are a lot of smaller steps that are important, and they, you have to set up a schedule with what you think has to be accomplished. You have to, you have to have an actual calendar, even if you don't succeed in staying with the calendar. And the first step is to figure out what the different decisions are that have to be made. So, that's why I listed all these things. They may not be in order, but these are the things that I could think of that will have to be accomplished. And in the first few months, you know, probably a primary issue is selection of a shelter site, because that's going to affect what type of building's going to be designed. For the league, it's continuing to raise funds and be in touch with donors who've promised funding. It's been quite a while since the earliest discussions and commitments by donors, and costs continue to increase in the construction industry, so it's going to be very important to continue to get support and build more funds if possible. Approving the committee charge, hopefully we'll do that tonight. Soliciting appointees and approving appointments. You've already announced that you are still looking for appointees. I have been trying to contact architects that I know to see if they might be interested. So far, you know, not everyone has gotten back to me. So far, the ones I've talked to have said, "I'm already advising," you know, "Three other nonprofits, whatever, they'd like to help." I've asked them to put out some feelers. You know, maybe there's somebody in town who's a relatively young architect, has some experience, hasn't already committed to too many other groups, who would like to work with this project. It's not the biggest project in the world, it's for a single building, but it's always good to have an architect on a building committee.
It is, and we've been contacting some as well, for both this and for the Swift Hatch Shop Committee. So, we're having the same issue that a lot of people are already committed to other projects and other committees in town sometimes even.
We are emailing as well, so I think we're tackling it from all sides.
I'm assuming you're looking for an architect that will get paid, not donating.
No, no, no. What I'm talking about now is trying to have someone on the committee as a committee member, which is often, often has happened in these building committees now. So, moving on from that, yes, we have to find committee members, and we'd like to have good, strong, people with a strong commitment and good qualifications.
That was kind of unclear, so it's an architect for the committee?
Correct. Just to advise, you know, in the process.
Yeah.
Secondly, you know, to evaluate what the architect's telling the town as we go through this process, once an architect is chosen for the project. Another second step that's kind of preliminary is, but very important, is analyzing options for managing funds that are donated for this project, because they don't all have, they may not all be donated at once. If there's a large gift, it may be broken up into segments, and there are possibilities for taking money over a period of time and doing borrowing, perhaps, but having a commitment to pay the cost of the borrowing. So, these are some options that the town's financial advisors and, you know, treasurer, town accountant, whoever you normally would talk to, I would suggest that the town consider whether there are other options besides just accepting funds and putting them into an account, which is what we would normally do with a gift, in order to try to get the most out of the money that's going to be donated to this project. The commitment is to provide the funding for the project, but you still want to get as much out of that money as you can.
Right.
It's never going to cover as much as you want it to, so. We have some agreements that need to be drafted. They're all based on the MOU, and I'm not going to list them all, but, you know, they relate to how the money will be provided, what the building process will be like, what the Milton Animal League will be responsible for, who's, what the agreement is going to be for operating the shelter. Those are the major areas that we will need agreements about. And then, as far as the project itself goes, there's going to have to be, continue to be talk about the project objectives, concepts, and specifications, because we're talking about a building of a certain size and a limited amount of money, and it's been a long time since the architect prepared a conceptual plan. I think one of, you know, the consultants who will be required for this project primarily are architects, but they may have to be engineering consultants, or the town may be able to do some of that. But the architect is key, and that's usually, I think, an RFQ process. I'm not sure. I just put it in here as a step. Once the committee is appointed, they're going to want to start working on defining the role of the architect and defining the qualifications that the town's looking for with the Board of Selectmen. Because, and, you know, you're going to have to hire the architect, certainly once the site is selected and you know that you're going to be able to proceed with the project. Right now, we're kind of going around and around with the original architect. We don't know if that architect's even going to bid on this project or going to submit a request for, I mean, a qualifications submission. After that, there'll be detailed project design, project budget will have to be worked over and over again. That leads into preparing bid specs, advertising bids, selecting a contractor, and then you get into the building process, you know, applying for a building permit, and then all of the problems and issues that come up when you're actually doing a construction project. You'll notice a memo about the committee that we suggested that you appoint somebody from the Consolidated Facilities, if not the director, then somebody from the staff, because that's going to be, I think, a key connection for you with this project, and it's going to be also very important to the project to have advice from Consolidated Facilities.
Will the building come under the Consolidated Facilities?
It'll be under the Board of Selectmen, so unless you decide that you don't want it to, it's going to be owned by the town. The operation will be primarily, well, not entirely, but it will be largely provided by the Milton Animal League, but you do have an animal control officer who's also staffed for the building, and the town does pay for one assistant who does certain, during certain hours, is there. And that, what we have proposed is that the same framework continue into the future, but in a new building, and that the town will be responsible for maintenance for the building, while most other costs will be paid for by the volunteer effort. So, it's a town building. The Consolidated Facilities Director will probably be having, be advising you about maintenance and oversight, should be anyway, if you're responsible for maintenance.
Yes.
And, but even if that weren't the case, I would ask for their expertise, if possible, to be on this committee. I think it would be a great asset. So, that's a very quick review, you know, final, you go through the entire building process, you have a lot of change orders.
Marion, sorry to interrupt. There's no zoning board of appeals or planning board or anything?
No, well, this is a municipal use, so municipal use is exempt from use restrictions. This building has to comply with all of the building code requirements, all of the zoning requirements for lot distances and, you know, lot coverage, open space.
Frontage.
Parking, frontage, all the requirements that would apply to any private property will apply to this as far as zoning is concerned. But the use is a permitted use. It's on municipal land, well, if it, I'm assuming there's going to be a site that's a municipal property. There, so as far as I know right now, there is no requirement to go to the planning board or to the Board of Appeals, but we're still looking at whether we've overlooked something in that regard. A building permit itself is a step that can give rise to questions. So, even if you don't have to go to another board for permission, when a building permit is issued for a project, someone can say, "Gee, we don't like something about that building permit. We want to go to the Board of Appeals," or something like that.
There's no design review requirements of the planning board or anything?
No, it's not a commercial project in a commercial district, it's not a multiple-unit project, so it doesn't come under design review.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that you can't get good advice, and we won't be getting good advice from the planning board, for example, on issues that relate to design. And I think it's always necessary and a good idea to. And I think it's always necessary and a good idea to submit projects like this to, to the management, so you have a management group from the town that reviews your project proposal, and the Planning Board reviews it, and they always have good suggestions. So, maybe there will be something that will have to be addressed. There should, certainly during, as the project progresses, the town should be keeping, and the animal shelter should be keeping neighbors well informed as to what the steps are and what questions might arise and what choices might have to be made.
Okay, so we can act on the motion tonight. We have a revised motion, it's a black line copy. Do we have a clean copy as well? Okay.
I have one.
Good.
The move that the Board of Selectmen vote to establish an animal shelter advisory committee for the purpose of providing recommendations to the Board of Selectmen regarding planning, design, construction, and furnishing of a new Milton Animal Shelter, and regarding management decisions throughout the process of design, budget preparation, construction for a new Milton Animal Shelter. As that process is further defined in any specific agreements made between the Board of Selectmen and the Milton Animal League governing funding, design, construction, and management of the new animal shelter. Said committee shall consist of no more than seven members, to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, at least one member shall be appointed, be an appointment recommended by the Milton Animal League, at least one of whom shall be the town's Consolidated Facility Director, or a designated member of the facility's management staff for the town, and at least one of whom shall be, have detailed knowledge of energy conservation techniques and technologies. And the committee members shall have architectural and design experience, experience in all aspects of construction, knowledge of energy conservation technology, municipal management experience, including construction management, and experience with Milton Animal Shelter operations. Committee members shall be appointed for one-year terms for each fiscal year, except that appointments prior to June 30, 2015 shall be in effect until June 30, 2016.
Good job, Tom.
Any discussion on the motion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've approved the charge, we need some members, we have a few. The Animal League will recommend one person, but if anyone's watching or knows someone who would be a good candidate for this committee, we encourage them to contact the Selectmen's Office.
And I just suggested looking at the list of duty, of, of steps that have to be taken for this project, that you focus on steps one through nine, they're all sort of getting ready for the project, things that we can be working on now. Of course, selecting a site is key, but these other things are very important, and they, they kind of can get lost. Once all of a sudden, somebody thinks, well, let's get going, if we haven't evaluated how we want to go about managing the project from a financial standpoint and from some of these other, in view of some of these other issues, it won't be very, it won't be as well managed as it could be, so.
That's true.
What I can do is come back, you know, where it says, for example, you know, we'll come up with a, a detailed list of recommendations to be submitted by the advisory committee, that means these are steps and these are recommendations that periodically the committee will have to provide to you. We can continue to work on that and make it a little bit more detailed, maybe run it by some of the department managers and see what else should be included.
Well, I wonder if on the board's side, would it make sense for us to delegate a town employee to be responsible for sort of the day-to-day following through, making a checklist, making sure that we're doing what we need, thinking about what the next steps need to be, thinking about, for instance, one of these, number seven, determine any future town meeting vote. So we know we have a vote at this particular town meeting in May for the access road on the Randolph Avenue site, if that's the site. The other potential site is, of course, the current location, but there's a lot of regulatory steps involved there if it were to stay there. I think we should designate one town employee, and maybe it's the Planning Director, we also have an Assistant Town Planner, but probably it makes sense to have a day-to-day person be put in charge of keeping track of all of the things that need to be done, making sure that the board's taking note on a timely basis and that we're complying with these deadlines.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, otherwise, if it's, if nobody's right out, then it's...
Right, we have to have one, one person, the board's going to have to vote on a number of these things and act on some of the, and make some decisions, but I think we need a town employee looking at, or being responsible for complying with the deadlines and making sure that this is moving along.
I agree.
So, it probably makes sense for the Planning, our Planning Director sitting in the back and smiling because he's thinking we're going to...
It could be that, it could be our, it could be our new contracts person when, yeah.
In the Selectmen's Office, that's true.
Selectmen's Office, yeah.
It's another option. Or the Assistant Town Planner. So, we have some more resources now in town that could be helpful in this area.
Assistant Town Planner. I think it's a good idea whoever you appoint, and we really appreciate that, I think that would help a lot.
Yeah, and to be interacting with the Animal League.
Yeah.
On some issues that might come up, whether it's through Consolidated Facilities or, or with Marion, or the, the league itself.
The league is a relatively small group. I communicate through the Director or through, through the President, and they have a very good email circulation, and the word seems to get out right away, and I get comments back from a lot of people, so they're actively concerned. So I don't think it's going to be a problem keeping communication flowing, but that small group, I think it's a lot harder for the town, because everybody's busy with other things, so that'd be great.
Okay.
That's great.
Anything else on this, Marion?
I don't think so. I'm sending you a couple more little memos, you know, and I'm going to try to highlight critical areas that I think we need to be paying attention to. Some of them were mentioned tonight, and we won't have to meet with you all the time, but I'm going to keep sending memos and sort of keep the flow of communication going. And if there's anything we can do to help you with your process of site selection, of course, we're available.
So, Marion, just one last, when do you expect to have this committee together? When would you like to have it together?
Um, next week. Truthfully, we would like to have it appointed as soon as we have enough members, at least five members, I think. We want to have seven, but the committee could start if it only had five.
How many do we have now?
I don't know who we have right now, who we need to, you know, you have to get your...
Pull up ours.
Mal nominee from, by next week you'll have that person.
Well, we could try to get it off of one of the April agendas, like we did with the Swift Hat Committee, to appoint some of the members while we have a group, and then appoint some others later.
Okay.
It just seems as though if you can appoint the committee, then you're going to get some help from the committee too, so that might be good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Marion, you're going to stay with us at the table?
I am, I just have to grab a drink.
Our Planning Director, Bill Clark, is also here, and Bill may want to come up to join us for this discussion. Marion, you requested this meeting with us regarding the condominium planned unit development warrant article.
Right, thank you, and first of all, I have my...
If you don't mind, we'll have Bill come up and join us at the table.
Hello.
Good evening, Bill.
Hello.
I have my Milton Animal League hat on, so now I'm taking that off, and I'm here tonight representing a developer who's been trying to, to develop a site up on Hillside Street and Ford Ranch Road. And on his behalf, I've been attending the working group meetings since October. I have, not a member of the committee, but I've been sitting in, and they have been very generous about allowing all of us to enter into discussion with them about condominium zoning and whether the town is going to be able to write somewhat more general condominium zoning that could apply to multiple sites, as they did in October for the St. Pius X site. And there's been a lot of interesting discussion and some very good points made, and some progress has been made, but the committee is certainly not ready to have zoning, general zoning, ready for the May town meeting. Meanwhile, the developer I represent and the owner of the land on Hillside Street, that's John Fandry, he's the owner of the land, and it's about a 13-acre site, and Todd Hamilton, who is the developer, would like to have an option sooner, the next fall, if possible. And in view of the fact that the committee, they've been very respectful of the committee process, and I think we're hopeful that the committee would be able to come up with some zoning that could be used after the May town meeting, but that hasn't happened, so, and some people, some, some interested persons who wanted to see a general zoning article filed a ten citizens article in January, and that was a very general zoning article that would apply just about everywhere, and it's been met generally in discussions with the comment that this is just too broad, it's not detailed enough, it's not defined enough, we just can't, we wouldn't be able to do this, we'd have to rewrite it or do it differently. And the working group has tried to, has done some work, a few members of that group have to rewrite that, but no agreement has been reached, it's going to take a lot more work. So, what I have done is taken a revised version, really written a new, a new version of that submission for, that would be, basically would be site-specific for the Hillside Street site, and it's, is very detailed and very limited. So it's much narrower than the bylaw that was submitted in January. And I did that last week after it was clear that the committee wasn't going to be able to support, you know, they weren't going to be ready with the zoning article. And at this point, at this time, it's really too late to submit a new article, because you're sending your warrant to the, to the printer tomorrow. And special town meeting article, which would be a possible way for a new article to be submitted, would have had to be ready at least last week, if not before. So this, if it's going to be discussed, if this version of the zoning is going to be discussed at town meeting, it has to be discussed as an amendment to the article that was submitted. And that would be a decision as to whether it can be done that way that the moderator has to make. If the moderator is, I have emailed him and asked him what his opinion would be, whether he would be likely to allow discussion of this as an amendment, is it narrower than the scope of the article that was originally presented? I haven't heard back from him. If he says he would consider it, then I would ask the Warrant Committee and other town boards to look at the redrafted article in its much narrower form and see whether they might be able to recommend that the article, recommend the article, so that we can have discussion at town meeting of an option of condominium zoning at this site. This site's been under discussion by the Fandry since 2005 for development, and they haven't, they do not have a plan, and they really want to sell the property. And at various times during that process, 40B has been discussed as an option, open space development proposal was not accepted by the Planning Board, so that option, you know, fell through. There's one A and R lot that's on appeal, but it's not part of the development site that we're talking about now. And condominium zoning, some type of condominium development has been discussed, we've been discussing it all year, because the site is an upland area, it has about 13 acres, it's a, it's a great, a good distance from both of the public ways. One of the sore issues with this site has been that it, there's a, there's a private way, a 30-foot private way that you can use to get into the site, but the neighbors who also share the use of that way did not want that to be used, they didn't want to see any more traffic on it. And so to build a road from another direction for a ranch road, which is substantially more expensive, and there are some wet ones, and there's a stream that you have to cross, requires that you do more development of the site. And this condominium proposal is, we think it's a viable proposal, we think it might work well, it would definitely be what I would call high-end condominium development. It would have to have affordable units, because all of the zoning that we've passed in the last few years, PUD zoning, has included an affordability component. And that's all been written into this draft. So what I have done is I've sent the draft, I sent it to the town administrator. The Board of Selectmen have it, if you want to review it individually, feel free. I don't know what the answer is from the moderator, so whether he's going to consider this, would be willing to consider it as an amendment. I have sent the draft to the Chairman of the Warrant Committee saying it's possible that we may ask you to consider this as an amendment to the zoning that's been filed. Tomorrow night is the hearing before the Planning Board on the, on the zoning article that was filed, and again, I've sent Bill Clark a copy of this zoning so that the Planning Board will have it, and will be aware that there would be the possibility of an amendment with, you know, much more detailed and narrower form.
Marion, can I ask a procedural question? You referred to an amendment, what I thought was that the proposal was that this narrow article would, we want you to be proposing to be the Warrant Committee's recommendation.
It would.
Obviously, they'll have to debate it.
They were recommending that the article, that the ten citizens article, that they would propose this as their recommendation.
Their recommendation on your original article?
It's a wholesale amendment. It's a, and you do, that's, see that with zoning sometimes, but yeah, that you rewrite the article, but if it's within the scope, in this case, it's much, much narrower than the original article, the Warrant Committee could propose it as their recommendation.
Okay.
I don't know whether they're going to, so I'm not, I mean, I wouldn't presume to say they're going to do that.
Yes, understood. I just wanted to clarify that, because I, a question about a different citizen article on that same issue about amending, it came up earlier tonight, right before the meeting, so.
Now...
So you're not really, so the article is what it is, what you're proposing is the war, this revision would be the Warrant Committee's recommendation under the article, even though the wording's different, it's a narrower proposal.
Yes. The article I, I gave to Mrs. Fagan last week was written as an article, it would not be, it would be preambled by a recommendation article.
The recommendation.
I would propose that, I would hope that the Warrant Committee would consider doing that. The purpose of this is to get this discussion in front of town meeting, at the very least, we're going to have more insight about what the concerns are and what people care about, just as we gained some in October at the discussion there. I know this frustration with the site-specific nature of the town has been writing in the last 20 years or whenever, but once you get into this discussion, as I have in watching this working group, you can see that, how difficult it is to come up with a general zoning bylaw that adequately protects the, each site and the peculiar characteristics that each site has. I mean, on one site, one thing might be the issue, on another site, it might be lot line distances, and the third site, it might be the view from the street. You try to write an omnibus thing, you'll see some of it in the, a little bit of, in this article, and then you end up realizing that you haven't adequately addressed another concern. So, this is intended to be very narrow and applicable at two, probably one site. I mean, you should look at it that way, it may be that it applies to some other site, and if it shouldn't, then there might need to be further amendment.
The only comment I, at first glance, when I read through it, that I, that I have is, in terms of the affordability factor, and obviously I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust and, you know, a big proponent of affordable housing anyways, but this particular site, I'm not sure is the greatest site for affordable housing, only because of the, the market value, number one, of what these units are going to be, and, and the fact that in order to, to get it to the, to be an affordable site, the density has to go up an awful lot, because he's, he's losing in terms of sales value, $800,000, $900,000 on, on every unit sale is affordable. You know, he'd need to be better off with an off-site, you know, affordability, or a payment in lieu. I, I strongly suggest, only because we have a, an Affordable Housing Trust in place with no money, and that perhaps in this one particular case, a recently decent-sized payment in lieu to the Affordable Housing Trust, they could perhaps then leverage that money to really do some interesting things with affordable housing, may be a better alternative.
It's not something that I'm opposed to, I know, I don't think any developer would say no to that option.
Right.
I think that the problem is that an affordable condominium unit would sell for about $185,000.
That's right.
Estimated based on the, you know, the current SMA statistics and everything. And a condominium at this site is going to be well over $500,000.
Probably.
Much well over. The difference in the cost of, between the price that you would get for an affordable unit and what you would pay to build it, because the units will be the same.
Right.
Is probably, might be $300,000 per unit. We talked about this a little bit at the town meeting, and it was very hard to pin down, because it depends on the market for the units you're building and how much it costs to build them.
Sure.
These will be high-end units, so you're correct, there's a $300,000 cost approximately that has to be recovered somehow by the developer. So if he's required to put in four condominium affordable units.
Right.
If it's a 45-unit development, 10% is at least four units, he has to recover four times $300,000, and that's where you, why you need the additional density.
Right.
So, you could have a payment in lieu, but if it's the full amount that you are...
You don't accomplish.
Avoiding, you're not accomplishing anything.
And most towns don't have that.
Unless you just don't want affordable units on that location. So you have to decide, and it's a town, you know, it's really the town that has to make this decision. It could, I can provide language for alternatives on how to fund the affordable units, and I can provide it, you know, separately, but it would be, it would be either part of a recommendation... And I can provide it, you know, separately, but it would be, it would be either part of a recommendation that the warrant committee might decide to make part of this or it might be a motion that someone would make from the floor. But I think it's something that we have to think about because we're going to have the same issue with zoning if, if more zoning is written for the October meeting.
Sure.
You know. So I, I agree it's an issue. I don't want to say that the developer doesn't want to do affordable units because he has no objection to doing it. Certainly, the Fandry's have no objection. I don't think the neighborhood in principle objects at all to the idea of having affordable units. But the question is, you know, what effect, is what you just said. What effect does that have on density? Does it make the project denser and in that sense, less acceptable? The neighborhood hasn't had a chance to sit down and review the zoning. I mean, maybe one or two or three neighbors have looked at it. So there's quite a bit of discussion that's going to have to occur. And there may be other issues as well.
I know, Mary. I have a question. You mentioned the neighbors. A couple of the neighbors have seen this?
Three neighbors have seen it. They asked me to send it to them on Sunday and they have it.
Okay. At various times over the last couple of years, different members of this board, others have tried to encourage the neighbors and the developer to sit down and talk. I know about a year ago, they had some discussions. Has there been any recent conversation within the last few weeks between the neighbors and Mr. Hamilton? Or is there anything in the works to try to set that up?
Well, three neighbors, the three neighbors that I sent this to over the weekend sat down with Mr. Hamilton on Friday and they had a, they had a meeting. That was in the works for a while, actually, more than a month. But we finally got it set up last Friday. And the, the last meeting I attended, because I didn't attend that meeting, was a year ago. And it was, it was a group of neighbors and Mr. Hamilton and it was a good meeting. I mean, you know, Mr. Hamilton said, these are my issues. You know, he laid out what alternatives he felt he could work with. The neighbors talked about their preferences. And, you know, I, I thought we could have built on that. But it didn't really happen. I couldn't, I mean, it isn't that, you know, people have refused to meet. It's that nothing happened for a long time. Then the neighbors wanted to meet to talk about a proposal they had worked on for, for eight houses or nine houses. At that time, the developer said, well, I've already said, you know, seven, eight months ago, that that isn't a good proposal. I don't want to do that. And they didn't have a meeting, you know. So that was the only, that was the last foray, you know, last attempt to get people together. That was, I think, perhaps in August or September of this year. There have to be discussions now. I mean, if this is going to be discussed at town meeting, there has, has to be discussion that takes place during April. I don't know what the outcome will be.
I think everyone would like to see a discussion between the neighbors and the developer and see if there's any way to build some kind of a consensus on what should happen with this property that, that...
Well, and a good outcome is the objective, I think, that we all have. I do too. I mean, I, I want to see a good outcome. It's a beautiful neighborhood, you know, it's... So maybe this will spur better discussion. In any case, and we're making the attempt. I can tell you that much.
That's good news.
You have, you have the copy. You can review it. Planning board will be, will have it.
And speaking of the planning board, so you said there'll be, is it a public hearing tomorrow on the article?
There's a public hearing on the article tomorrow night. Planning board is meeting both Wednesday and Thursday night. And, you know, they have the ten citizen article. I mean, that's what the public hearing is for. But I, I've already submitted this.
Yeah, that was really my question. So if their hearing is on the ten citizen article, are you going to be there presenting this to them as a potential proposal to the warrant committee for a recommendation?
I will, well, I will for informational purposes be telling them that I have drafted this. I've already given it to Bill Clark. That we will be talking to the warrant committee about whether they might be interested in producing a recommendation based on a revised, a substantial revision, a much narrower version of the article. They won't be able to, I mean, they'll just be looking at it tomorrow night. They're not going to take a vote on this revised article. I can't imagine.
No, no, I understood. But they have a copy of it. That's really my question.
They do. Is that right? Yeah.
They have electronic copy and a hard copy.
It's, so it's available. You have it. It's a public document. Anyone who wants to look at it can get it from the selectmen. They can get it from me, mcmcathric@gmail.com. I'd be glad to send it out. I think more common review would be very helpful. The sooner the better. So my main purpose in coming in tonight was to just let you know that that's the status. I had sent some kind of draft last week and that this is where we are. I'll be waiting to talk to the moderator and see what he thinks. And I know the warrant's going to press, so.
There was a recommendation for, for eight houses down there? Did that include a bridge over the stream or was it coming in through the private way?
Actually, I don't know. I, I never saw what the plan was.
It was the bridge.
That was done by the neighbors.
Yes, but I, I would assume it probably involved building the road from Ford Ranch Road, crossing the stream with the bridge and crossing the wet ones. And, but I never saw, I just haven't looked at it, so I don't know what the details were. Because, because the access on the private way has been a key problem throughout this whole discussion for now three years, four years. So I think we're trying to find a way to develop, you know, see that the site can be developed for a good value and a good way for the town, a good way for the neighborhood. But that takes into account the cost of development as well. And, you know, we'll get a, we'll create a reasonable return for the developer and the owner.
So what's your backup plan if the warrant committee doesn't support the amendment?
Well, it won't be able, if the warrant committee doesn't submit the amendment or if, if we could have an amendment from the floor. But you know how this process works. The warrant committee needs to be willing to look at this, I think. A town board could submit the amendment. I mean, the town meeting allows an amendment to come from any of those sources.
I think the warrant committee, though, will be looking to the planning board for...
Yes.
For guidance.
Guidance, yes.
They will.
And I think we will be as well because, at some point, we'll be asked, what's the selectman's view on it? And we'll want to have some input from the planning board.
Right. So they will have this. I don't expect any decision-making at the public hearing. But I will be looking for feedback after the public hearing and hopefully at a meeting with the planning board or a hearing or however they want to do it.
Is there a follow-up discussion going to take place between Mr. Hamilton and the neighborhood?
The next step, according to the three neighbors, the neighbor that I spoke to was that they were going to go out and discuss this with their neighbors first.
Good, okay.
And then we're available. That's, you know, I am if, if anyone wants me to be there. Trouble with bringing your attorney, though, to these meetings is that, and everybody brings their attorneys and it sometimes helps and sometimes it doesn't. So, you know, I, I would like to see the developer sit down with the neighbors. I think that would be a good thing. Or I hope the neighbors will be willing to.
In my opinion, that's always the best, you get the best results when...
It's really critical. It's necessary for any development project.
But when the actual developer himself sits down with the neighbors.
I agree. I agree.
And hash out a deal and then you bring in your lawyers to, to put it together.
So I'll be encouraging that. I hope everybody else does too.
All right.
Look like you want to say something?
Yeah, sorry, Bill.
I'm good.
Thank you both very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks a lot.
We'll stay tuned and we'll look forward to word on this one. See where it's going. The next item on our agenda is a discussion of the Yulin rink permit extension. Just going to report on this, Tom or Anne-Marie or Bill?
I guess, hey, you must can. I'll start it off. And basically, we've got this in writing now from DCR, the, the ability to execute an agreement that would extend a five-year operating permit for one additional year, to make it a six-year permit in essence, under the same terms and conditions, I believe, as the five-year permit was.
That's correct.
With the exception of the rates will incorporate the newly revised rate schedule. So it's just a matter of if we want to do it and if we want to sign it and send it back to DCR.
This is for a one-year extension?
It's just a one-year extension, which, I mean, the only reason for doing it is to, is really to buy some time if we're going to try and negotiate a, a long-term contract. Obviously, if we turn it back to DCR, greatly diminishes, I think, our ability. I don't think it puts it to bed totally, but it's certainly easier to negotiate while we're still operating the rink.
What's the status on the park department taking this over?
They're still looking at it.
They won't take it over for the one-year extension.
Right.
They will...
The 25-year lease.
Heavily consider if we have the 25-year lease.
So the, the issue of if we're going to take it over for the one additional year, Curry's contract will have ended. It ends with this season. And so we will need a rink manager under the same terms and conditions. We're told by town council that we could extend Curry's contract for a year. They will be, if not at their $550,000 expenditure limit, very close to it. So then the question becomes, is Curry willing to extend their...
Increase their spending?
Yes, exactly. And that's the question. Curry's still going to have the answer.
So who has been in touch with Curry? Bill?
We have to do a negotiation with Curry. There is a scope of services that was prepared by town council. I have it. I've marked it up. I have to now send it back to town council and see if he can remove those items so that I can send it over to Curry. I think that the one-year extension is, we need to have the rink manager in order to accept the one-year extension. Otherwise, we're running the, the rink and you all might have night jobs if you decide you want to extend for a year.
Yes. I can run a sample.
I heard that. I'm taking notes.
Well, we have a proposed motion. If that's the case, if we need to, should we be acting on this tonight? Or should we be...
My problem we have is it's timing of, we have to get this thing back in.
Contingent upon. And I think we can work with Curry very quickly. They've, they've known this is coming. They, they've thought about it. They've heard these things before. I don't think the contract's going to take that long.
Yeah, I just don't know if DCR will accept it with a contingency in it. That'd be my concern. I mean, the, the contract still will have a 30-day out clause regardless.
Yep.
So worst case, if it falls apart, it has a 30-day out clause.
Sure.
Yeah, and the motion is styled as approving and authorizing the town administrator to sign. So it's an authorization to the town administrator. If there's an issue still pending with the manager that needs to be worked out.
So I, I think it behooves us to make sure we, we know where we stand with Curry as soon as possible.
Right.
And that's, that's why we wanted to make sure that the contract, that the scope of services in the contract, you know, work for both of us.
Has there been any talks with the Milton Youth Hockey about this?
Yes.
How'd that go?
It went well.
Last, this Monday, the 16th?
Everything blends together. At least it's tax season. We did have a meeting.
It was Monday, the 16th, yeah. Monday, the 16th at 5:00.
We did, we discussed all of the different points, who's doing what. We discussed the schedule. There were a lot of...
Very productive meeting, I thought.
There were a lot of misconceptions at the meeting that...
Were clarified?
I think so, yeah.
I think everybody went away happy, that they felt that they were getting the voice. I think that's all they really want to be, is at least heard.
Yes.
You know, they're not looking for anything special. They're not looking for special privileges, I don't think.
No, I think there were some issues there that they, they didn't understand. But the makeup of the people who were here, the ice coordinator was here. So the issues of ice time, you know, he heard them. He was able to explain some of them away. I mean, I think scheduling was their probably biggest obstacle, but he explained how those things work.
Will, will there be any renegotiations on some of the ice time?
The only thing we talked about a little bit, and it's the only thing we really can do is, I mean, for the most part, that ice time is all accounted for in terms of the prime time with the user groups that are in place right now. So it's not like, it's, it's not like Milton Youth Hockey is getting less time, you know, and...
It's just different time.
Our prime time is already all accounted for.
Totally accounted for.
We don't have open prime time.
So the only thing we, the only thing we can do is perhaps give Milton Youth Hockey a right of refusal if ice time does open up.
Did you mention that for them?
Yes.
Yes, we had that conversation.
Were they okay with that?
Is it permissible to do that under the terms of the contract?
We had, I mean, the issue at the last ice users' meeting was, you know, does anybody else want more ice? And Milton Youth Hockey's comment was, no, we're good. But he'd get home and he looked at the plan and he needed more hours and he went out to get more hours.
Their program has expanded, obviously, over the years.
Right. And that, and that's the problem. Over time, I mean, a couple of years ago, they had open, they had ice time that they were paying for that they weren't using. So they turned it back. And when they turned that time back, the rink is required by its permit to maximize the rentals. So they did, they rented it out and those times are now accounted for. And they feel that, or they felt that those were our times. And it's like, no, you gave them up. And their ice coordinator is the one who said, no. You know, we gave them up. We gave them back. You know, we can't take somebody that's had it for three years and say, oh.
You're out.
I'm sorry, but you're out. Milton Youth Hockey's coming in. Because our permit specifically tells us we cannot do certain things. And one of those things is to give special preference to the town of Milton, Milton Youth Hockey or Curry College. So those are the three that wind up taking the...
Right.
We're not giving them special privileges.
Assuming that Curry takes the one-year extension, will they agree to write a first refusal for Milton Youth Hockey for...
They pretty much give it to them anyways because they are the number one user.
Understood. But are they aware of this request that Milton Youth Hockey wants?
Yes.
They are, okay. Will they agree to it?
As they can, as much as they can. I mean, they, they can't, if somebody's had the same ice for the, the last 10 years, you can't just say, I'm sorry, but Milton Youth Hockey wants that ice.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm actually, if they give it up.
Oh, yeah. If they give it up, that's fine. Yep.
Will Milton, will Curry agree to give Milton Youth Hockey the right of first refusal on that?
Yes. I, I think we're going to have to check up with DCR to make sure that we're not violating anything. But there's two issues. One is, one is the 25, you know, the longer-term lease. And that's a negotiation. So in that negotiation, we can potentially get that in there. On the operating permit, that's a fixed, you know, we're accepting the operating permit you already have.
Right.
So it would be a question for that one-year period of DCR, would that be violating anything?
Okay.
Like give them a right of first refusal.
I only ask whether it's permissible because there is that language in the contract that you kind of give preference to the local community. So we should check that out.
Yeah.
Just to make sure it's permissible. And this whole conversation just goes to show why this really should not be a selectman's issue. This should be the Park and Recreation Department.
We didn't write...
Who are handling this. So the sooner we can try to transfer this from the selectman to the park commissioners, I think, the better. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the town administrator signing the permit extension between the town and the DCR. Curry, it sounds like there's some negotiation that needs to be taking place, whether that's Bill or Tom or Anne-Marie. Should we act on this motion tonight?
I think so.
Please. Someone like to offer the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the town administrator to sign a permit extension between the town of Milton and the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the right to operate, manage, and maintain the Yulin rink for one year from the current expiration date of April 30th, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Bill, so you'll keep us up to date? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
We're on to number 11, the Inspeccional Services Appointment of a Senior Administrative Clerk.
I'm making a motion to approve the appointment of Mary Martin to the position of Senior Administrative Clerk in the Inspeccional Services Department.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think she's a wonderful addition to the Inspeccional Services. I'm looking forward to having her there. Very personable person.
Congratulations to Mary on her new position.
Yeah.
She served for a lot of years in the police department.
Thirty. She's town employee for 30 years.
Then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Town administrator's report.
Madam Chair, I don't have a report this evening.
Chair's report. I don't really have a report, just an acknowledgement of the, the co-chairs of the Milton Foundation for Education Dinner. I thought we all attended that event a couple of weeks ago and they did a great job. Mary Ann Roll and Karen Viveros and their entire team. That was a very successful evening for the school, so.
Yes, it was.
Congratulations to them from the board. I also wanted to just clarify one item that there's been some confusion on recently. And the issue of the firefighter medical override is not a warrant article. It's a ballot question that will be before the voters on the April ballot. And there's been some people who thought that that was a warrant article before a town meeting, but that's not the case.